And this is what they told me. Over half the people we see for whatever reason end up being COVID positive. The regular surge ICU is entirely COVID. And everyone there is on a ventilator. We only get rooms at night if someone dies or is moved to another unit. I was literally cleaning a room last night and the nurse warned me that they were waiting for the patient across the hall to code any minute.
Thank you so very much.
Carrie K.
My name's Carrie K. I want to thank Mr. Feenster, my representative, for adding the mask mandate to the agenda. I'm also here to speak in support of it. I'm here to ask you please to listen to doctors and to our Centers for Disease Control. Masking works when it is universal. There's a big study reported in the past week in the Washington Post and New York Times proving that again. In our local press, we know that our hospitals are full, including the children's wards. And an association of state children's hospitals has asked the governor to do his part to make mask mandates possible again. I know that you're not the governor, but you could protect us in this county. That's really all I have to say. I'm going to leave my other minutes for someone. But I ask you to do this for me and my family, my children, the friends we have who have lost loved ones to COVID. This is preventable and you have the power today to make things better. Thank you again, Mr. Feenster and all of you.
Thank you.
Clayborne Lindell.
Hello, my name's Clayborne Lindell. Thank you for letting me speak today. I believe that the purpose of this council is to ensure that Pickens County operates well. And you've been doing a fabulous job on many things. But unfortunately, I feel that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, especially the recent Delta surge, Pickens County is not operating at its best. As previous speakers have mentioned, our hospitals are at or near capacity. So if we have a car accident on the way home, there is a high chance we cannot receive a full spectrum of care because there's not room right now. In the Pickens County schools, currently 142 students are positive for COVID and 704 are quarantined. That means between 800 and 1,500 parents are missing work right now because they have to stay home with their kids. Businesses have been interrupted not only by this childcare issue, but also by having their own employee infections and quarantines interrupted by their interrupting their ability to stay open and stay operating. In central South Carolina, there are two small businesses I go to regularly that have had to shut down temporarily or change their hours significantly in the last month due to employees not being able to come to work. In Clemson, there's a locally owned restaurant that has now shut down, I think, four times due to employee sickness. And just this morning, a preschool in Clemson had to completely shut down, leaving all of those kids without school and all of those parents without anyone to watch their kids so they cannot go to work. I spoke with an employee at one of the manufacturing facilities in Liberty who told me that they were just a couple of employees away from having to completely shut down their manufacturing line last week because so many employees are currently out. Our businesses and schools are not operating well because of the pandemic. And we have one simple way that we can solve this problem and keep Pickens County open and operating, and that's through a mask mandate. According to research published just last month, the average person with this Delta variant infects five to nine people. If you wear a mask, that person infects an average of half a person. That leaves five to eight people who can go to school and go to work. Another way to say this, masks decrease the infection rate by 75%. A mask mandate by this county means kids will wear masks in school, decreasing spread among the unvaccinated. A mask mandate would reduce the strain on our hospitals and healthcare workers. A mask mandate would ensure that employees wear masks at work, which lets our businesses keep operating safely. And a mask mandate will keep Pickens County open and operating, which I believe is what we all want. Finally, I just wanted to also throw in that I support adjusting mileage rates to fund improvements to our roads because I believe these are similar. We need to act as a council to do the better good for the good of our entire community in a way that benefits everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Valerie Melville.
May I have a phone? Just give me each a binder? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Valerie and I'm a Pickens County resident. Thank you for having me to speak today. I'll tell you, I'm pretty nervous, kind of shaking. I'm not a public speaker. I only do this as a last resort. I do TNR, trap, neuter, release for feral cats in Pickens County. I've done over 40 TNRs just in the past year. And that number is high, but it's also low because we don't have proper facilities to drop off the cat, do the spay or the neuter for an affordable price, since they are technically no one's cats, right? If it was your cat, if you had one or two, no problem, pay the couple hundred, whatever, get it neutered. We're talking colonies of 15 to sometimes 40 cats. And at the prices that are available or at Langston's where you can only do two, no, three vouchers per month, that's a drop in the bucket. That's a needle in a haystack. That's nothing. And I do say this specifically for feral cats because the program with Langston and Clemson Paw Partners are both so important to this community. And I applaud them and I'm glad they're here and thank you for making this work. This is just for feral cats that again are technically no one's. They live healthier lives. They don't fight. They don't yowl in the middle of the night. They don't spray when they are neutered. So this is also a community issue. I'm sure you've gotten complaints about, you know, feral cats in the neighborhood making too much noise. This would cut down on that also. So this is not just a feline health issue. This is also a community, you know, this would help benefit people as well. My phone rings every few days with a new person in Pickens County that has contacted me to help them because they don't have the resources. They don't have the traps. They can't afford the spay-neuter. So me and several of my colleagues who are here, we scramble and we make it work with, you know, our own money most of the time, which isn't ideal. So if you would please read through your binders, there's a lot of good information in there. I made that just for you guys. And I mean, if you have any questions, I hope this is the beginning of, you know, a conversation about this. I don't want it to end right here. So I will be in touch and just thank you so much for listening. And, oh, 16 seconds. Chairman Powers, you said in the beginning that this was something, public forum is for things that folks deem important. I know that cats aren't important to everyone, but they are important to me and a good number of those in our community, you know, that have contacted me and that I've been helping and just thank you.
A county EMS employee who fears speaking up at this meeting has reached out to me and is concerned about the situation at present. As they say, there are fewer trucks ready to be out covering medical situations in our community and that many employees are leaving to go to other counties who are paying them more, thus leaving our community understaffed. My question to the council is, have you compared the salaries of surrounding counties? And are you concerned about the situation of fewer trucks being manned and ready to roll? Are you concerned that experienced veteran employees are leaving our county due to lack of pay benefits such as extra COVID hazard pay? And if you are indeed concerned, then what exactly are you doing to resolve this issue and give the taxpayers in our county assurances that you are doing everything possible to make sure that when we call 911, there will be someone coming out in a timely manner? I am trusting the person who relayed this message to me as being factual, that our county is not prepared for the EMS needs in our county. Having proper coverage for emergency situations matters. Please let us know tonight if you are addressing this issue and how. Also, conservatives of the upstate are against any mask mandates or requirements taking place in our county. Masks are not proven to be effective and the box they come in actually states they aren't effective. I tested my blood oxygen levels before I put on a mask and after wearing a mask for 10 minutes. My blood oxygen level dropped from 97 to 92. I didn't want to see if I left it on any longer, what would happen. All I know for sure is if blood oxygen levels are too low, that can interfere with keeping the cells in your body healthy. I for one refuse to mask up for that reason alone. Lowering my oxygen intake cannot be healthy for me at age 69 with a pacemaker. Masking up should remain a choice, not a mandate. Conservatives also want to know two more things. Number one, if you are going to refund the illegal road user fees that you've been collecting, we actually think you should be pressuring our board members on the county transportation committee to be getting more funds from all those state gas taxes we've been paying instead of raising our property taxes. And number two, why are you ignoring our over 600 signed petitioners who wanted you to pass a property rights protection resolution? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Cheryl Thornton. Cheryl Thornton. I'm going to not mouse this correctly. Lyu Malo, Lyu Malo. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm too going to talk about the mask mandate. I'm here because I'm parent of small children and I'm very worried. They cannot get their vaccines yet. One has pre-existing respiratory conditions that puts her on a higher risk. While my children do use masks, having the, it is proven scientifically that having the whole class wearing masks would protect much better. While we can do our experiments at home, we can rely on not reliable sources of information. It is not only in the United States that science found how effective masks are. If you don't believe what is published in the United States, you can check what other countries are doing. There were places that decided to go for herd immunity. And we have the variant from United Kingdom. We have, we have a variant from Brazil. This is what happens. And they have also huge amount of deaths. We did not choose to live in the age of a pandemic. It was not our choice. None of us wanted this. But here we are, all in this together. And we have a choice. We can decide or to protect ourselves and our communities, or to do nothing and let the virus spread and let it brew also inside our bodies and produce new variants. What do we want to do? Last Thursday, in the United States, over 3,000 people died from COVID in one single day, more than victims from the 9/11 attack in one day. We have South Carolina State leading the national statistics of positive cases. We have children hospitals that are at full capacity. There are children on ventilators. Now starting today, there are also two children on a machine, external machine that helps the, that substitutes the heart. Are we okay with it, really? Is it what we, we feel good for our community because it is preventable? And we are very lucky because we here have the best scientists in the world working for us. We have the best vaccines available for us. We have masks. We know what to do. We have guidelines, but we are not following them. You may say that mask mandate would limit our freedom, but as a society, we give up...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'm Alan Quinn from Easy. I usually come here to talk to you about lack of economic development in Pickens County. But tonight and next month, I want to address the tax increase being considered to fix our roads. I know you had to quit collecting the $20 road fee because it was ruled illegal. I know something has to be done to replace that money to continue fixing our terrible roads in Pickens County. The $20 road fee provided about $2 million a year and the county transportation funds about $2 million a year. That's a total of $4 million. You say it will take $6 to $8 million to do a better job of maintaining our terrible roads here. The answer to this is to raise taxes only enough to cover the $2 million lost from your $20 road fee. So you ask, where does the other $2 to $4 million come from? All the people, everybody sitting in this room have already paid more than enough taxes to do that. There is now at least $1 billion, $1 billion in excess tax, gas tax trust fund now because SCDOT cannot spend the money fast enough. They say they can't find contractors and get projects approved fast enough to spend all the money coming in from the gas tax. SCDOT told legislatures when the gas tax was being debated, don't increase it 12 cents per gallon all at one time. Just do it in two cent increments over six years because we won't be able to spend the money fast enough. Well, guess what? They were right. It's being increased 2 cents a year and they still can't spend it fast enough. Thus, we have $1 billion surplus in gas tax trust fund and it's growing every day. The gas tax was supposed to fix all the roads in the state, county and state roads. How much of the gas tax fund goes to the counties? Any of you know? 20%? 15%? 10%? 5%? Nope. 3 and 1/2% of the funds that are sitting in the bank in Columbia are coming to the That's criminal. The state needs only about $500 million to fund new and ongoing projects each year. This leaves $500 million right now that could be sent to the counties. That would average $10 million per county right now and much more in the future. How many miles of road could you fix with $10 million? So next month, I will come back to tell you how Pickens County and all other counties can get their fair share of the gas tax trust fund that increases every time someone puts gas in their car. Thank you.
Margaret Thompson. Thank you. Margaret Thompson, Clemson Paw Partners. I just wanted to give you an update. We took a chance a couple of weeks ago to start introducing vouchers for spay and neuter. Now, our prices, because I got some feedback, were a little bit on the high side. But if you read the fine print, you can get a dog neutered or spayed. We don't differentiate, differentiate between a male or female. Rabies, DHLPP, and microchip for $100. If that animal weighs over 50 pounds, then the vet can charge you another 15. If that animal is in heat, can charge you another 15. Where can you get that done? People say, "Grimble Humane Society." Well, I did the math. We come out a whole heck of a lot cheaper. And what we're pushing for is not only to get your animal spayed and neutered, but we think vaccines are so important. It is pointless to have an animal, a dog, spayed and neutered and not be treated in case it gets parvo. Then you get a few months down the road and say, "Well, I got them spayed or neutered, but now they have parvo." Well, that's your fault. So moving on to the feral cats, we came up with $50. What people don't understand is we have to pay that other part. Now, that may, that may be on the high side. What I would like to see, see done and get to that point where we can do it for free. But Clemson area is carrying the load financially. But the resources who need our help are coming from Easy, Pickens, and Liberty, but not their money, just their, they want their animals done. We get a lot of people from Easy. We get a lot of referrals from vets' offices. We had one, I think, one or two from Easy Animal Hospital and said they wanted to get their pet spayed or neutered and they referred them to us. They got their vaccines because we can do it at a cheaper rate. I'm not blaming the vets' offices. They've got a business to run and they've got a lot overhead to deal with, but we've got to get this problem under control. I'm going to continue doing it with the vaccines because it makes no sense to not do it without the vaccines because you have covered that animal that you spayed or neutered for a whole year until they come back the next year to get their vaccines. It's pointless to do it without it. And if it costs more, we've had nobody complain. We had a great, I think I tell you, we had a Great Dane that's going to get done. Where can you get a Great Dane done for 100 bucks? You're looking at 800 bucks at a vet's office, easily. So, and I hope the voucher program still continues, Mr. Roper, at the shelter because it helps us. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Howland. I'm from Easy. I'm a mother of four that attend Pickens County schools. We've had several videos of our school board telling us that if the masks are mandated in Pickens County, that they would also mandate them in our schools. There's over 2,000 parents in Pickens County that says that they don't want their child masked or vaccinated. And we also know that it starts with the mask and normally moves to the vaccinations, just like we've seen in the federal government. There are several parents that are willing to take civil action against these mandates because it's our children and it should be our choice. It's our bodies. It's our choice. I've heard several people stand up here and talk about breathing problems. I have COPD. I have asthma. My doctors personally has told me not to put a mask on. I've been hospitalized three times because my lungs are not personally strong enough to push the CO2 out of my lungs. What do you do with people who cannot wear them? They are not allowed in public? Is that what you're saying when you say mask mandate? Because that's the way these businesses see it. That's the way they see me. And as being a mother, am I not allowed to go in the store and shop for my children because I personally medically cannot wear a mask? Education and healthcare is not a one size fits all problem. When I go to my doctor's office, I have to go in the back door because some of the healthcare systems are requiring masks and have required masks to come in. It's spreading fear amongst people because they see somebody unmasked. They don't see somebody with a health problem. They see somebody has just been defied. And that's not the case in every case. You know, people don't see this. And then I have a 10-year-old son that I had to pull out of school because of the way that they were doing last year with the virtual school, week on, week off, all this mess. He becomes so afraid that he was afraid to come out of my own home because he was afraid of catching COVID. He was afraid. And the numbers, when you look at the CDC website, everybody's saying, "Oh, it's a spike and increase." But I guess people are too stupid or just too lazy to read the underlying print because on the CDC website, it says that if you've tested positive within 14 days and you have a car accident...
Rick Henry.
My name is Rick Henry and I got one thing to say, one thing only. My kids will not put on a mask for nobody around here. I don't care who it is, anybody in this room or anybody out here, point blank and period. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, this concludes the public forum. There's still like 10 minutes left.
I wanted to speak to this on prior.
That's our rule, function of the rule to sound prior to the meeting begin. Thank you, ma'am. We move to the next item, order is denied. That's the approval of minutes for the August 16th, 2021 meeting. I ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the August 16th meeting. A motion by, how many things do I have?
Second.
Second item filed by Chairman Thompson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a correction of the minutes, so it's August 16th on page 5. It says the council voted 6 to nothing on law 139. Looking at the tape, which I did, it was actually no vote because the item was also on the agenda, hanging from the team, but we did not vote on it. Coming out of committee. So I want to scratch that vote from the minutes that have occurred, make a new review.
So removing, it said on the 139, it's a press...
No, because if you look at the medicine line, it written, it says law 39, coming out of committee, it was 6 to nothing to approve that. It wasn't. It was actually no vote that occurred. I just want the 6 to nothing vote scratched and maybe, maybe watch the make a change review this. You see it? This right here. This, these two things that are happening.
That was the section where the projection got twisted because of the council meeting, the link to committee meeting.
No, what happened was I have 14, the same thing. We didn't want to get it to later at the meeting. We did it, but it's going to be, are going to be twice.
Yes, my point is, is just a clarification that the first rate had already occurred at that moment. That's, it was text rated, you not pointing, pointing in the, if that was on me, I remember saying that was on me. Any other discussion? I have a motion on that amendment. Second, council members. All is in favor, that's adopted as amended. Is it a very... I'd like to, just because of the public forum and the conversation that's already occurred, now I'd like to move item 13 on the agenda to be next on the agenda. That's the discussion of county mask requirements. I want a free projection to that.
Second.
I have a, I made a motion, I have a second, any discussion on that? All is in favor, move item 13, please take a public standing. All right, that's unanimous. So item 13 tonight is discussion of county mask requirements. I was contacted by a council member that just purely wanted to have a conversation around masks. And I understand that some of his constituents, like mine do and yours do on various things, reached out, concerned, and just wanted to have noticed the county was taking this seriously. And that's the reason why it's on the agenda. I've seen discussions, seen social media posts, et cetera, about why it's on the agenda. Pure sole reason is the council member asked for it to be on the agenda. I think that's the right thing to do. I did reach out to our attorney because I have concerns, I think the word mandate appeared, and I have concerns over the county stepping out too far purely because I know the state has some things in place and I know the school district has had some things to deal with. And I've heard, I heard a comment about the school district, you know, a member said he needed to reach out, of course, whatever. And I'm not playing that game either. So I'm going to ask, before we get started, when we're talking, whether it be in this building, whether it be county law, whether it be whatever, I know that you've done some deep in research, what were you going to find?
Jim, there are.
Jim, there are several differing opinions around the state, obviously, on masks. The governor has issued and heeded an executive order regarding masking. The attorney general has stepped in, Supreme Court has weighed in on a city of Columbia case where they overturned the city of Columbia's mask mandate. The research that I found would have it so that the county is allowed to issue a mask mandate. So the counties around the state are doing that. But because you're allowed to do it, doesn't mean that you have carte blanche to do it. In other words, there are some issues that surround passing a mask mandate. Number one, what does that mandate entail exactly? Does it apply to municipalities? Does it apply to schools? What is it? Or is it just an incorporated area of the county? So you have to determine what it is specifically that you would be passing as far as the mask mandate goes. And then, and something I think which is frankly more important, is if you pass a mask mandate, are you going to be able to enforce it? And frankly, one of the interesting cases, attorney general's opinions that I saw, was one that came out of Pickens County in 1996 where Pickens County Council, this council had passed an ordinance basically prohibiting some protests on county property. Well, some of the county property was an administrative building which is located in the city of Pickens. And so the first question was, can you enforce that within municipality? And the attorney general said in essence that you could enforce that so long as municipality agrees with it. So you pass ordinance, it's enforceable in municipalities in the county. But the city municipality would have to agree to enforce it. And then the second issue is, well, how do you enforce it? Is the sheriff the person that would enforce a ordinance of the county? And typically, the sheriff would be the person that enforces it. So the question becomes, if you enforce, if you pass an ordinance, a mask mandate, and the city of easily has a file error of whatever it is that you passed, how does it get enforced? Does the sheriff do it or do the easily, the city police do it? And that question was answered by attorney general saying that, well, again, you have to have an agreement between the city and the county. And then the government agreement, and you did, and you could have the city police officers enforce it. So when you pass a mandate, it's not just about the fact of the mandate itself. It's how you apply that mandate, what the factors are in that mandate, and how you enforce the mandate. So there are a lot of issues surrounding whether or not you do the mask mandate.
So, Mr. Greenster, I know you and I have had some detailed discussion here. If there, if you'd like to give us a little background or a little further conversation.
Yes. In the city of Clemson, we have a mask mandate that applies to the state of businesses. And at first, it wasn't, it wasn't obeyed completely. But as time has gone on, I've been in the breakfast door and there was a guy at the door saying, thanks for wearing your mask. And so there, the businesses are back there south of Clemson, city of Clemson.
So the conversation and discussion is in general about masks. I think we all have our opinions. I know Mr. Roper, the county has required a few weeks back. And so, as you might said, one of the John Soplin study, which is actually very common that South Carolina is Tennessee fight for the number one instance rate in the country. And the Tony and Pickens fight for the number one, number two, and said South Carolina. And believe in community, that's a great thing for us. And that's why I'm going to leave that. But I know that you, you have county staff, they're not able to separate and all that. We're doing it. And that's a decision you've made and you have done. My biggest concern over any mandate is can you enforce it? That's the sheriff standing in the back of the room. If I were to call him on the car boot, which I'm not going to do, Sheriff, and say, can you, and if we were to pass something like that, can you enforce it? I know the answer, but I may not even ask you. You've had so much other going on. I think the frustration is the same frustration we've all seen. And if this isn't, it's really easy to get on social media and get out and say what you want. But the truth of the matter is, we're all confused. There's no, there's very little truth, facts. Nobody knows for certain, does the mask work, does it not work? Because we need to find out, there is just no such thing as that. Someone brought up this rank, both our EMS system, it is taxed, it is beyond tax. Our people are tired. That's the best way I would describe it. Our people are tired. Mentally, physically, emotionally, they're tired. And it's not like it was a year ago when the majority of what you saw on up here were the cases. We're seeing everything else plus COVID. And COVID's taking twice the resources, twice the time, and it's, it's tiring. And I think that's the reason that we're here even talking about it. So I guess one question, you gentlemen, because I really am not prepared tonight to pitch a mandate of any sort. But I did agree to have the conversation. Is this something that we want to look at? Is this something we want to talk about? Truth of the matter is, common sense goes a long ways. If you sit, stay home, wash your hands, stay away from other sick people. You know, don't be in tight confines spaces with people that you don't know. You know, stay in your, in your groups, if you will. I mean, that, that's really what's going to get us through this, I believe. Maybe wrong. But do we want to have a conversation about mandates?
No. Let me see. Um, I received many emails about the mask mandate. And I explained why the mask mandate would require more filters. I wear a mask when I'm on top of people. If they're close to me, I wear a mask. If they're not close to me, I don't. Our buildings, the customers in our buildings, it's sparse. And I went to the library a couple times. Fifty-three thousand square feet, maybe 20 people in the building. They're not six feet tall, Clark. They're a thousand feet tall. What if they need to be wearing masks for a mandate? I pay my taxes online. I mail my taxes. I've come in and paid my taxes. It's me and another guy in a 10-by-10 foot room. Why do we need to wear masks? I don't want to. Why mandate masks in our buildings? And that's our responsibility, our buildings. I responded to a lot of emails earlier on, as many as I responded to. And I asked you, why do you want us to do this? And you were very honest. You want the schools to mandate masks. And if we do a countywide mandate, then they're going to force to do it. I give you credit, I mean, you can't. But they wanted me to pass a mandate on mask countywide to force the schools. Schools, I don't know, school board, 12 years. Line number one in the law, school board manage the schools. Not the county council. Go petition the school board. I personally did not like the indirect pressure that was put on me. Because you wanted me to do something to the school. Go to the school board, we, like I stood up there and told them, the majority of times did this, that. That's their job. It's not my job to manage the schools. We manage our buildings. So I thought it was kind of, I don't know, there's two things that would bother me. One was this, this, we want you to pressure the school board, the school board doesn't want us to do it. And then the other thing was, I explained it to you three or four times. I continued to get back and leaving. Why aren't you doing it? I said, I just explained. You just have to, sometimes you have to accept, accept another. It's not going to be your way. I wasn't making that. So that's what I want to add. I think you want to discuss it, that's fine, but our responsibility is our building. When you talk about our building, it's false. You don't need to wear a mask. If you want to buy two places, like I said, I wouldn't be eating in the library. There's a guy fifty feet across the floor by himself. Does he need to be wearing a mask? I need to just move and walk. Ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments, any other discussion?
So I've spent a third of my professional life as an industrial partner. So I've asked a lot of things regarding TPD, et cetera, for the general help and help the folks around me. And as a project manager, manager, et cetera, responsible for making sure that incorrect ways that folks appear to those things. Obviously, there's safety folks, I'll have to put people engaged or part of that. What I've found over the years is that safety glasses make complete sense. And I've had five folks, I've approached so many times for not wearing safety glasses. I've never done a reason why they don't wear a safety glass. I've also seen folks have to be, you know, to it all to the doctor because they don't want to wear safety glasses. And as project manager with financial control position like that, you kind of have to take the overall control once performing a project. That's a lot of people call and it was a struggle. And despite having a good reputation for not accepting safety issues on my jobs, I still call people every day. So many people every day. And folks don't want to protect themselves. They have some reason which is, you know, up to them to decide not to participate in it. They don't participate. And in that case, you know, everyone talks about their freedoms. You had the freedom to show up, work somewhere else other than my project. And a lot of folks broke in with it. They didn't want to wear it for whatever reason they didn't want. And so for me, no, it's completely fueled, ask folks to not want to wear the mask, to wear the mask. Within a society where personal responsibility is not necessarily part of the discussion or is personal freedoms. I don't think it's going to help us any, it's going to dig us a big hole, it's going to muddy the water during the pandemic environment. But we need to be focused on other things we don't have control over. The school board is a bunch of professional folks, very approachable. And the context of their decision-making needs to be taken out of them in their context. We shouldn't be put in a position to try to pressure the school board to do anything. Because we would specifically and intensely result in the event that they try to pressure us in that direction. I would prefer its folks to go call the school. And I found those folks to be very accessible and approachable. From my position, folks should make their own decisions about health. I think that from a role model perspective, a leadership perspective, folks in this council have done what's appropriate in our community. And I don't think there's any room in Pickens County to be telling those what they have to do. It's not a workplace. It's not a job site. I don't want to tell you what to do. You're not even a bar. You walk to the building, they got it. Almost the business is completely capable of dictating to you what you want you to do or not do in this business. If they want to keep people coming in, they have the right to do that. And they have the right to contact the sheriff and the police departments to come and enforce that, decide not to leave. That's the right they have as a business owner. You're on the home. You have a personal right to listen to the things that your kids see. You also can choose for your children. I think if you're responsible for us as grown people, to tell other grown people what they have to do or don't do with their families or on health. I don't tell you to take, I would never want to tell you to take, okay, I want to do it. And I won't participate in doing any kind of mask required for it. And I think that there are probably other organizations in the state, one powers us to force, to drive, to incentivize, to communicate that in this council, in this county, where we're limited. I would say that I respect him making the decision for his votes. And in fact, we've worked closely together. In my business, we never closed. We don't have a mask mandate in my business. We're in a shop and like as much room. In the office where I have multiple customers come in and sit down across the desk on a daily basis. In the event that they ask us to, or they look like they want another brand of mask, I'll wear a mask. When they ask me not, I'll tell them that I've been vaccinated and that I've had COVID and that I think the risk is low for me, but I clean the desk. That's everybody leaves. You know, so I'll think, before you walk in the door here, you shouldn't necessarily catch something from the last guy here. I don't think that I'm a risk for you, but if you want to wear one, I'd be glad to wear one. It's just decency. I'll just wear the mask. That'll represent the decency. And I've had to wear respirators and masks in industrial environment. In fact, I've had to shave my beard to go, you know, work in industrial environment, wear a respirator. I mean, there's a certain push and pull here. We all have to have a work together, live together. For us, to tell you what you got to do is just absolutely ridiculous. I don't want to participate in that in any way.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I agree with you on all of that. Early on in this pandemic, we were facing the same, the same question. And that's what I'm indicating. We made a conscious choice to focus our attention on those people who need help the most and not to have the government mandate something other than we want to help. So we had the father of bills on bills, United Way, and all these other organizations to try to help those people who need that help. The, I don't, I believe, and I'm thinking of the comments about fear. It reminded of a conversation where I was looking like an idiot with my family because at Sunday dinner, they were talking about COVID. And somebody made a comment and I said, that's not true. And it always turned into an argument until my kids told me to shut up and I did it. And I realized that the information that he has and the information that I have, there's a lot of misinformation and it turns into fear. And I really believe that if this council were to create a mandate, that government was going to start stepping in to tell people what they could and couldn't do, they could do other things, and it just builds into the fear. So I, I think we need to focus our attention on how we can help those who need.
Do I have to say something? I, I always, too, in, I'm a small government, and for a whole operation, this is a outreach of the government responsibilities. We live in a country of personal responsibilities. And if you wear a mask and it makes you feel safe, then wear a mask. But if we go out telling what that overreach your government, this is a free country. I can't tell this has a head of this business. I can't tell this guy has a debt. If this is decided to affect policies, like you said, that affect the business, you have a choice to build that business, not wear a mask. What we have is so care, the government is so far overreach to start with. It's just not.
Any other discussion, any other conversation?
I'd like to make one more comment. If we were to have mask mandate, we would have to have a way to make exceptions to the lady that has COPD. And what I would suggest in that is be to have a bracelet or some necklace.
Please, let's see, this is very strict, please. This is not a time for interaction.
Anyway, I felt I ought to make that comment. My wife cannot take that nation because she has a thing called Sweets syndrome, which makes her body break out in things that look like petals all over. And she's had two doctors tell her that taking the vaccine couldn't reactivate that. And she's all about twelve years ago now. So we all have things that need to be sent to the cloud.
I think that everyone said, and you said to the best, that the small government is not the government's place. But I agree with what Mr. Wilson and what Jimmy Kossner and, and all of us said. We all have to be smart. And at some point, we have to take personal responsibility for this. There's no way, if we want to force a mask mandate, there's literally no way to enforce it. And that alone is just, I think, before asking I to consider, the truth of the, the purpose in pushing something that you know you can't enforce. Is our healthcare system in this county, in this state, in the upstairs of the county, stretch students, wearing masks? Absolutely it is. I sit day in and day out, further for living with our offices, where we not paid it. We have to do something, I don't think a mask mandate is yet. Because if you pass a mandate that applies, what's the purpose, right? So I just, I don't think that this is something this council needs to do. I don't think it's something that this council should do. And I do want to hear that everyone to wash your hands, keep your distance, stick on what you said, take some personal responsibility, because that's really what it comes down to. It really is.
Yes. I was, we had a discussion this morning. We talked about this and we talked like, I'll share our ideas. I think there's a certain degree of irresponsibility that we saw earlier today. We put it up, you had a request as chairman, you put it on the agenda. So we asked, we've had chairman before control the agenda, but not that he's only been able to talk about. So we put it on the agenda, the calls were placed. What we saw earlier today, where it's hopefully well-meaning, as we're exposed, that use the fact that we're going to have a discussion, a discussion in a public forum, has an opportunity to try to further operate. a discussion in a public forum, has an opportunity to try to further outrage the community. When a community is already, you know, kind of polarized, this over the thing that you hold close about it, folks that aren't protecting, protecting themselves, their own kids, some folks have considerations beyond that. Then you have this group of folks, they're trying to find their opportunity, to sort of further polarize them, forsake their own political attention. Not intention, but the attention that the folks have to get and hope to leverage your fear, the focus on them in a way that helps them go validate in some way. So I would say is that social media can go consuming either way. You can use it for a force of good, a force of not, but you can use it for that sort of selfish sort of need to bring attention to yourself, you should be ashamed of yourself. We're going to have a discussion in public, we're going to try to be as open about it as we possibly can. We're working for y'all and we're trying to work in front of y'all. And I'd say it's discouraging in some ways to see folks want to try to grab every opportunity to highlight any negative they can find and trouble, to try to wedge between us the opportunity not to have that discussion. Or folks that see any level of discussion, something that they disagree with, or something they don't like, is some validation of their outrage against me as a political person or with a dark guy around or with a piece of this or that. Just look at it. There's no place for it. There's no place for it in a responsible society, when you're adults. That's not the way to roll them off, that's not the way to get heard. So you should be ashamed of yourself. Return something like this discussion into a way to try to highlight on you and get you attention for whatever moves you're looking for. Which to me is to take the attention of them. Please be better than that. As a community, be better than that. As individuals, I'm trying to be better than that, because I can belong to my kids. But what we saw today is pathetic. Just using this discussion, the fact that this is a lineup on our agenda, is a way to try to just chin up as much energy as possible, can it's a duty for validating. It's one of the essential reasons why in our society, people forward with our areas and forward with the whole community. Like in our case, we're going to blow our robes tonight. Not a single bit of discussion by grassroots folks today about the robes that touches everybody and everybody's pocket and everybody's safe. But instead, you're chipping out the idea that we have a mass discussion. Completely cloud out that very meaningful, economically meaningful discussion of all those creases that you got up there, you should be ashamed of it. And real life ones saying, "Then run against me, vote against me, lie about me some more, that's fine by me." But don't treat your neighbor as someone who can be manipulated for your own personal gain. It's pathetic. And I pose as a grandstand, had the difference this discussion to me today. To witness what some of you folks did. Sorry, but that, I just wanted to say, put this discussion out of that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other discussions on that? I hear none, we'll look at it the next time on the agenda, we'll give the benefit of the right of report, Mr. Roker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the council, I appreciate the opportunity to present a few matters for you tonight to report. First, very germane to discuss, we were just at it. Probably the best way to look at it is just the data we're given from DHEC right here. You see the larger spikes, that was back around holidays, Christmas and New Year's, and then the spike that we're witnessing now amongst the Delta variant. So hopefully encouraging signs is that our seven-day roll of damage has stayed alive. And so we're hopeful about that, we're hopeful about that as a county staff. We've got a couple of conversations tonight about the stress to our EMS folks, the stress to our fire departments, folks at the jail that are having to deal with this too. It is stressing our system and so we're very hopeful and want to encourage everyone to do what they can to pitch in and help us reduce that rate. And I think common sense is a good guide there. I can tell you that vaccinations in Pickens County per DHEC, about forty percent of the overall population has been vaccinated. We don't inquire about that day to day with our county staff, but based on data positives that we've had, we think our county staff's running to be about forty percent vaccinated this way. So we're just trying to do what we can here, as you all referenced. We encourage masking in the building, we certainly want to deny you service if you're not masked, but we encourage it amongst the staff. Me myself, I've set up for Zoom calls or WebEx calls, I do more things by phone and email. And then when I have to be in close proximity, as you say, if I have to be in close proximity, I'll wear a mask. And it's, that seems to be serving as well as county staff now. So I just want to encourage that. And along those same lines, I want to encourage folks that might be thinking about the vaccination to realize that we have a vaccination clinic right here in this building. Several days coming up, including tomorrow morning at eight AM, you'll be able to get a vaccination right now, all without appointment. That'll be true Thursday afternoon, next Monday afternoon, the following Wednesday morning, Thursday afternoon again, and then Tuesday. We'll have this, we have all this information both on the DHEC website and on our website for those that might be thinking about the vaccination. No cost, no appointment necessary, although if your Windows site, you want to make appointments, we'll allow them to do this. Been keeping you updated on the capital improvement plan, as you've just kind of internally started using green for, okay, everything's been done that the government has to do. The equipment's ordered, so the significance, we're starting to have some orders going down with the budget that you just passed, effective July one. Those specific greens right there are police vehicles. Police vehicles that are now in direct positions to be developed in the competitive process. Just wanted to keep you updated on that, that we're making progress forward. We're actually looking at some of our purchases, I talked to the emergency services director just today, Lou Gibson, about our fire trucks, trying to expedite those orders because of supply chain issues. If we wait around too long, when we order things in our capital plan, they may be a year before they hit you. So we're trying to look and do it in some of those, do some emergency procurement processes and still be compliant with the law. I'll keep you updated month to month on that. Solid waste update, you'll see here the Tanta or Tama, I don't know how it's pronounced, the shredder, the C and D shredder. So this big excavator is dumping the ground goods that all of you members of the public are so diligent in bringing to us every Saturday. And we appreciate that. And that's then trucked to our main landfill location and it is shredded into a cover. But one of the things you don't know that I wanted to highlight today is that once it's shredded, there's a magnet in that machine that reviews the metal. And normally, the amount of metal that we're able to get from people bringing their metal to us every week, and we appreciate that, is in an order of magnitude of about forty thousand dollars a month. It'll vary, there'll be good ones and bad ones that surround there. Since we put the shredder in use, I've got the check right here, ninety thousand dollars left.
Good job.
You think that was a good, a big step forward, it's allowing us not only to get paid more because we're getting the metal. Think about this, what we were doing otherwise was shipping the metal to the landfill and paying a tippy fee for it. So the savings is even more. We were upset today because that grinder actually went down, the shredder went down on Friday, it's routine maintenance, the belt's not last forever. So we were getting the belt in and getting it back to Florida this morning. Our solid waste guys are really excited about it and showing vividness, I just wanted to keep you updated on that as well. Conversation that we might want to have is what to do with that extra money we reinvested in solid waste, but that's not what we did this month.
You can.
Yes?
So who, did it add, did it run a month or four?
In a, in a month.
So it could pay for itself in what year, two years?
So we're encouraged, we're encouraged, I'll keep you updated on that, that will move forward. We're also looking at possibilities to shred the tires, tires are a big niche point right now. And how can we use tires elsewhere shredded? And the possibility that we can actually use them in the landfill as cover. So we're investigating some other things, they're trying to lead you in the bottleneck right now, we're depending on vendors, they won't come pick up the tires. So it's very frustrating for us. One of the other things, you know, a couple of our litter efforts. One is South County Public Transportation, for many years has basically contracted from Pickens County to provide litter pickup on our state highways, and the way we've done that is with inmates. That's not the way they do it in Greel, Spark, Bur, Anderson, or Eau Conie. Greel, Spark, Bur, Anderson, and Eau Conie, the way litters pick up on state highways is the state contract with a vendor that picks up the litter. So because we have not, you have had inmates in a little over a year now, a year and a half, D O T has been looking at how to help us there and I've entered into an agreement with them where they are going to start sending their vendor to Pickens County. Since we don't have the inmates available to us. That doesn't mean we're going to start, stop our pickup Pickens program. It's not going to start some of our other key, Pickens County beautiful programs on state highways, we're still going to do them. But I just wanted to let you all know that we're going to get our fair share of that D O T involved on our state highways. And us as a county, we're going to concentrate on county runs with our litter pickups. It's in the neighborhood of a hundred miles, it's just under a hundred miles, I don't have that exact figure in mind. But I know that it was over eighty a couple of weeks ago. We've really had some improvements also there. Regardless, we've also agreed with S E D O T to, we're going to still get complaints. So we've agreed with the communication aspect between us and D O T, so if they get a complaint from a county, whether they pass it on immediately and vice versa. So we're decided on that, hope that we'll see some improvement in our community. Also, people love our byways program, we have longshores coming up. If you haven't been to Longshores roadside park on Highway Atlanta, just before you get to Eau Conie County, you're missing one of those beautiful places in Pickens County. It does get a lot of use and it gets dirtied up. So Saturday morning at nine AM, anyone who'd like to come out and help us with cleanup there, we would be delighted to have. Tonight's agenda, I think, is third reading on the ordinance for us to take over operations of that facility full-time. Yes, please.
I saw there was a little discussion about the lakes and landings.
Yes.
Is there a particular program that folks should reach out to, partnership, about, you know, your store?
For cleanup on the lakes.
We're going to get the landings in, you know, kind of trash every weekend.
Yeah, Warpath Land is where we get a lot of complaints. And we also get a lot of complaints about Crow Three planning, but more Warpath. I've got a meeting coming up on Wednesday morning, with the D folks to talk about that and also talk about safety issues on the lake. So, you know, we had another dev on the lakes recently. And so we're going to explore a little bit of that, and to the Friends of Lake Kiwi Society that I know organizes cleanups, Weed Park doesn't count even for a cleanup effort there. We promoted their event, we participated, I participated, our park creation tourism staff participated. I know the sheriff does do some patrols through there. Ultimately, that's at the Duke Energy Facility, Warpath Land. And so I'm going to talk to them about some things that they might help us do, help us find, and try to keep that place in our Warpath Land. Some of you may have seen, I've been doing, I don't have a good marketing mind, I can't figure out what to call this effort, but I'm calling it plastic questions. And so in the effort to educate the public about our plastic issue, we had our plastics graded by the visitor. They came and looked at our waste stream and they said, "You gentlemen, I got this riding earlier." I guess last week. They said that what we had is plastic recyclers, recyclables is actually trash. It's too dirty, it doesn't comply, it doesn't fit what the market will buy right now. So we've looked at different ways of educating the public, I've asked you all, you've eliminated, it'll be sixty days to update the public and see if we can have it graded again. And when we have it graded again, is it then a good commodity that we can maintain plastic recycling in Pickens County? We try to come up with the easiest way to explain to people how people that grade our plastics do it. And this is the easiest way we can see. Are there threads on top of that thing you're trying to recycle? Screw on the milk jug, bleach bottle, water bottle, are there threads on the top? No, throw it out. I don't care if it's got one or two or whatever, but throw it out. If it does have threads, is it a pill bottle? That's a very small subset, if those aren't recycled, throw it out. Other than that, remove the lid and recycle. And we don't want you to include the trash bag in the bin. A lot of people do that. So I'm going to spend the next couple of months spreading this word, speaking to a couple of civic groups about it. I'll be on a little podcast about it. I'm going to actually do a two-hour shift at every recycling center to interact with the public and explain this process to them. So that we can, at the end of sixty days, say, "Does the public support our renewed plastic recycling?" So look for me on that, and I've been enjoying it so far, while it says a question. Yes, sir?
Say something. Several years ago, I go to the dump every two weeks. They had trash cans, I know our carpool is getting a little raided right now.
Right.
The side, all the, where we put stuff in, it's a trash can. So if you had plastic wrapped up in your carpool, you could take it off and just throw it in the trash can. Okay? And those, when there's not something there, there hasn't been for quite a while, it's just a thing. And I've got the same kind of, you could apply the clause, if you have a trash can, then with the prior to attendance, into those trash cans, into the main recycling, into the main, into the waste.
That's right.
On occasion. I think that has, has seemed like it's helpful for people to not put old, quality stuff in there, just to follow.
Yeah, well, actually, I agree with you, it is something that I saw firsthand when I did the two-hour shift at Willis Springs. People remembered the little blue roll-off bins that used to be up front where you could sort and a little trash can. I put those back in front of the plastic bins, just as part of my demonstration. And the attendant quickly called to do that, but it's not been practiced in some time because of COVID. Early in COVID, we weren't sure that our attendants needed to be touching the lights. Now we have better science and we know that's not what we do. So we're going to work to reintroduce that in the right way, with added staffing limitations. But you're right, I thought what you said, yeah, thank you. I'm going to continue spreading that news, look more letters at the editor in the upcoming newspapers as well, so we can try to share it in different places. This council last month passed a resolution, resolution twenty-one dash nineteen, recognized in September as suicide prevention month in Pickens County. Something I told the chairman and the previous chairmen, when y'all passed the resolution, crank that element to get to where a game staff does something. It's not just empty words, we do something with this resolution, so. This month, actually coming up on Wednesday, we have a talk, Safe Live webinar, which the clerk has information about, if you are interested. Interested, we have a suicide prevention lunch in the morning at eleven AM, E S D, and we're doing it in collaboration with National Guard. Our Crisis Intercept Matthew Reception, that's a big long word, but basically the secretary of the State Veterans Affairs Office, retired General Grimsley, will be here next Thursday, this coming Thursday, to recognize Pickens County for some of our anti-suicide efforts. And there will also be a hearing that night, I'll be there in Pickens Middle School, game on the twenty-third. Blomson County staff is a part of the go line, bringing the bin, then we'll help the passengers. So we're trying to take the resolution y'all passed and put it to work on the ground here in that month. If you know of any other things that you could be doing this month or suggestions that you have, I'd be very, very open to that. Gentlemen, I appreciate your patience as I went through all of that. That concludes my report, probably by the end of the quarter.
Question, I wanted to go back to the comment about not having trucks to meet demand when it comes to what you're talking about with emergency services. Is this something that we can, first of all, are we there? Is this something this council needs to consider as far as creating something where we've got more of our time? People, what do we need to do?
So the issue there has been very kind, not where we've been limited as much with trucks right now as with personnel. So if we don't have enough personnel to manage ship, it's something that's being seen, not just in Pickens County. I hope you all noticed, over the weekend, the Greel News had a story about Greel County EMS and one of the local hospitals were disagreed on this very thing. It's a stress around the industry in healthcare, but our limiting factor right now is not the vehicles, it's the manpower. We don't have, that being vacancies per se. We're not losing people left and right, although we did lose one last week. They have a very emotional letter about Pickens option, the chairman of the references. But I would say in terms of what you all need to do, we're going to bring you a more specific recommendation for the ARCA funds that we have in place that will address that and use some specifics of what we can do. We don't want to just say, "Yeah, we need more trucks," but we're also struggling with that.
My only theory is that our ARCA discussion is taking a while and we'll make sure we do the things right. I hope that we're going to be able to move forward. If there's something that we can specifically do to help, then I'm asking you to let the council know, I want you guys to consider this. And you need to consider this for end of the month.
Absolutely, I would say, Mr. Vice Chairman, for you all to take credit in these conversations in one way. And that is, last year, we asked for a raise for our part-time paramedics. This year, we asked for a raise for everyone else, and this council was part of the start of that idea, particularly this year in looking at how we fund it. So we're going to look and see how that shakes out over the next few weeks and bring further recommendations to you. But I do thank you all for the responsiveness you had up to now.
So I want to ask for clarification purposes, some manpower issue, I think we all understand that. I know that we've got a bonus, or we've never had not a bonus. We've got a bonus, or we've never had enough on this, no name. We've adjusted pay. We've adjusted pay several times in the last four or five years. Getting in manpower issue, you say you want a lot of slots. I know in the H R world, F T Es versus headcount versus, really pleasant, but there's a magic formula because then you start taking on a lot of abilities and, I say a lot of abilities, that's kind of horrible, but I mean, a lot of abilities of benefits and retirement and there's a method to that is typically.
Right.
But we're not in a typical time, or a very unprecedented time. Is it something we need to look at increasing that debt account or the F T Es for the part-time? We may not need full-time, we may need part-time. Because let's be honest, if we don't get a vacation time, even during this time, you have to shut down trucks.
Right.
If you're not letting people off, mentally, they're going to stay. So we need to look at adjusting, because especially part-time staff, it's one of those, you can adjust it, you know, I truly believe with attrition, you'll adjust it back if it's new. Is that something you've looked at? Or will we get?
It's something we actually looked at as late as last week, where the emergency services director was asking that question of our H R director, and we were debating it internally. Wait, does council create slots or do they provide a budget? And we have to maintain that budget. And if y'all have a strong feeling about that, I'll certainly comply. My understanding, what I'm going to operate under is, we're not going to worry so much about slots, we're going to worry about the overall budget. So if we need to bring a bunch of part-time along, seems to me that's something we need to try.
I don't like a truck sitting empty, knowing that it's putting an unfair burden on the crew that are working that day. It's not fair to the citizens that live in the county. It's, you're actually saving a budget by doing it, and I don't know if that's not the intention.
Right.
So I think that's actually the exact point, is budgetarily, it's not going to really make a big difference because you're still only staffing, we won't be budgeting, we create staff.
We're going to try to see if we have some luck recruiting more part-time people for the issue you mentioned.
A couple more things.
Good to say.
Just questions first. The, seeing these savings that you're having, I'd like to kind of quantify. When you had the, before you had the shredder, there's sort of a picture up there, you can only fill the bins up so much, about nine tons.
Right.
Now we're filling them up to about twenty tons because there would be shredders. So as we're still, there's less trips to greening.
That's right.
Because there's quite less manpower, less trucks, less mileage. Do you have any cash and kind of savings you're getting because of that?
I don't have to figure on that yet, although that is something we are looking to bring down.
Are you seeing the demand on public works being climbed because of that?
There's more than enough to do even now. So I would say, yes, we're able to do some more things, but it's not, it's not, it's not an instant fix, we're going to need to address that.
Okay, where do we stand in time to put a control box?
So one of those, we anticipate we can front you next month to be commissioned. It's going to be an internal candidate that we've decided. They'll actually make that transfer next Monday, and we'll start the training process with them. The other one, we completed a couple of interviews in our pending on our.
About EMS, it really is a two-pronged approach. One was to give targeted pay raises to EMS, which we, which we did issue, we gave actually a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in compensation. And I'll throw some numbers after, but it's public paramedics now make full-time about sixty-eight thousand a year. All right, this according to the numbers we've got. Advanced E N Ts, they make fifty-eight thousand, and basically, continuing to fifty-one thousand. So pay has been improved. The issue I think is, the number calls are rising like this, and we have to build a new EMS station in nine years.
I disagree with what Mr. said. If we had trucks sitting empty in stations, the issue's not not building a station, it's not keeping the vehicles we have staff on the road. You can't justify adding anything other than manpower until everything is in use.
So you're saying?
I'm saying.
Are you saying you're breaking down?
No, I'm saying we're not staffing it, we can't staff it. You had a few trucks stationed on Olive Street, it's Olive Street. I know my book is broken on the spot, but I'm going to bet at least forty-five percent of the time over the last six months, one of those two trucks is sitting in a station all day because they had nobody to staff it.
Okay, so you don't think it's a problem when all the easily vehicles were added to go and greasing and transporting people, and everybody else has to ship towards these?
I think it's a problem.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm talking about. You can talk about the different issue.
You can worry about your issue, you can build what you want, but if you can't staff it, it's still not going to make it.
Well, we're making, we have the trouble set, even with the pay rates.
That's the conversation we just had, isn't it?
We're not seeing attrition, but a lot of the backbone of our staffing is part-time people that have full-time gigs somewhere else signing up.
The problem you're having with part-time people is that they don't get the extra paid hours a week to go to town. And that's what's on their pay is not, it's like, the typical week is forty-eight hours, so paramedic will get an extra eight hours to go to town. That's why it's paid so much higher, that's one of the reasons. But part-time, I think, they don't get that. So their pay, you said their pay was raised, and we didn't raise it, is that what your recommendation is?
With part-time paramedics.
Okay, are you saying that we need to raise those?
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying we need to look at bringing more part-time people home. I think our salary is competitive right now. I stand to be corrected, and I pronounce it the case, but I think we need to bring more people home so we have more options for people to sign up.
You have very few vacancies. Oh, I understand, you have very few vacancies, it's just don't have enough staff. I think we don't have them. We're stuck in that headcount F T world, I agree, and not the real world, focusing on the issue, I think that's true. Once you get that, then I agree with you, I understand it's kind of a trouble, but we have to staff what we have if we can get there.
The other question that comes up, is exactly along this line, is how long can someone be taking up a slot while they never sign up for duty? Is that, that's another issue, that's the part you're talking about, that's the headcount of the beginning. Right. Ms. Wilson.
Staff resources, I have my fair share of that good skill. In my business, when everybody else in my industry is complaining about finding folks, I have not been able to find folks. I've had the opportunity to turn over the folks from a group I'm team. But I consistently overstaff on the good side of the fence. When I have the opportunity to hire, I take the opportunity to even constantly recruit them. And I let folks to do what I would do, I'm the only one who's certain that they're going to be a team. On the E N T side, you don't have that so much, right? You have a service provider, and what I would suggest is that you overhire, you know, push it. And, you know, because what it will do for me is, the heavy thing is, is why I would look for folks for overtime, if you're using part-time folks, choose a high-out resource, probably available hours, see what the hours coverage is, and then look at that full-hours coverage, not the overtime, and then add the percentage that gives you a factor of safety of ten, fifteen percent from a resource perspective, just on hours, not on lots of seats, right? It's one bike, not four more. But necessarily, why have the hours of the band? When you get to the point where you have an extra twenty, twenty-five percent band, but you have to lose the amusement, or you get to a point where the overtime, you know, it's a budget to climb to the point where you're going to break even, then you have to focus what you need. And then people worry about, well, now you got buildings, there's buildings around the buses, buildings, something pushing his chest, buildings, something checking his temperature. What I would like to see is a whole bunch of folks, where you get to the point where we got, we got an extra whole crew that we need to put into class, that was what I would ever see. It's not the only way to align, but I need the E N T to show up. I don't think anybody else does either, so overhire the position, go work itself out by the end of the year.
I think you're saying if you have a budget, you do the line, is what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, based on what the budget we have right now, overhire. If you're the first ones to hire, if you're going in and recruiting continuously, and you're participating appropriately, where you don't have to overextend the folks, the overtime expectancy, not allow them to take vacation, or part-time boss to provide in, and so the folks will like to have part-time hire, aggressive team, as well as, well as that. And the budget piece of the figure itself is one of these, overstaff.
No, there's a balance there, and I appreciate what you're saying, is exactly the debate we were having internally last week, which is, you know, budget versus slots.
Be aggressive.
And so I appreciate that feedback.
I mean, it's one thing, right? We're talking about like rares.
Right.
You know, for a toilet, for example, if one of the guys shows up sick alive, be very aggressive on that. First of all, you need the folks, it takes a long time to come aboard, it takes a long time to train, it takes a long time to synthesize, we go for part-time, we're full-time. And you know, from a professional perspective, push that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
They're not going to cost you, they're not actually, they're not, we got to be ready to have folks working, people sitting on the sideline, willing to work, available for thirty hours, willing to work, willing.
Right.
So what are you, so what are you saying, that we actually have bodies and not showing up to work?
That's what I'm saying, all, I'm basically saying.
I'm trying to give the gist of the problem, but that's all. A ton of people hired, so it's becoming, one of them here told us to build a new station, now we're hearing we don't have enough people.
We may be dealing with those problems, but the most important portion of it's not the building, the good people, it's the people to be a building for. He doesn't have that right now, because the way we do it, necessarily, despite the F T Es, they work a hundred percent of the time, they don't have a particular budget, well, for the part-time folks, have enough folks that you don't have to have to work every available hour until you can go work. So if you're going to schedule thirty hours a week, you can schedule twenty, that reserve the building, they will be getting sick. E N Ts can get burned out, they need vacation, they can take time off, they can go, they can go do things with their family. Overstaff to the degree that you don't have to utilize every available hour of part-time person, then you've got to conserve capacity. If you finance it on a hundred percent utilization, every available hour, then you're going to overbudget. But if you have enough wants to spread out the loads, but everybody's not under pressure, that's, that's the goal, right? And then if you come in and say, I got one extra guy at the end of the year, where we basically put money into the reserve room every single year, perhaps for one, I think we can give you a little bit of a down, a little bit of a fifty grand. Just be aggressive, you got to have lots of seats, we have a band.
You're not going to be over fifty grand if they're not working, that's the point that I was thinking about with part-time, is if they're not working, if they're not costing us, currently, we don't have enough to physically work. And I will say, it's not a unique problem in Pickens County, it's not a unique problem for the other states or the state, what you're reaching is a nationwide problem. I read an article today, it was actually out of California, where they don't have enough bandages, so they're sending Q R Ds to hospitals on the tech patients anyway because they're over credit, and they are literally going out unless you meet this criteria, they're not taking you anywhere. So before we go to get a truck, it's going to take an hour for somebody to come out, evaluate, and determine. And now we'll say they're doing all the type of health stuff and this, that, and the other. This is a national, nationwide problem. But if the problem is, we don't have enough openings to hire into, we need to fix that. And if that's supposed to be anything, which I don't see as supposed to be anything, because it's really not going to cost us anymore. But I can tell you, and I don't want to push the topic, I need to agree with you, I can tell you, we are shutting down trucks more than anyone in this room down there. And as long as we're shutting down trucks, we can't justify adding another.
And that's because we don't have enough bodies, the bodies that are there are working.
That's, that's a question Mr. Roper has to get with this thing now. Final answer, Florence Fittis.
That's exactly what I'm.
Because when we, when we as a personnel person in that meeting, I paid, she said we don't have any, any condition to go right now.
So if you, right, so if you, if you work full-time for Greenwood County, for example, that's your full-time board, if you signed up part-time for us, you're taking up a slot so we don't have a vacancy, but you never sign up to work.
Okay.
So that's the issue we're trying to address back.
So that's the thing, the idea is that. So I was going to be, when we told the personnel.
Because if that one guy, if that one guy would work one shift every six months, you know what, that's the guy that'll work one shift every six months, I'm just sort of when you get rid of it, it's on this good with you. So let's have another, that's all I'm saying. So it may take three days or more.
You start getting complaints, you can't sign up, this thing, you should never call me, then you got to.
Then you got to.
Right, well, for that, here to tell them.
See, once we eliminate this, once we eliminate, you know, prayers that we eliminate that problem, plan to eliminate that problem, then we're going to be a business saver.
That's right. And we'll think about where that's going to be added, how we're going to, you know, logistics and marketing and all that, but lots of seats, you got to, or horsewood bud, we need more horsewood.
I'll tell you right now, if you go out, you tell your EMS folks and your emergency services folks, hey, council will decide, we're going to build a new station in a new annual, there, you might get one or two, it's going to take them a day or two to realize what kind of staff they can staff that they have, but the majority of them are staffed. Well, they can't staff, they can't staff what they have, you know, can't have the loop for, the loop for, but it's not usable. And that's, that's a real concern. I agree with you, if you say that it is, um, we do need that, but we can't until we get there.
Frankly, just be aggressive.
I wish it was that easy.
It's okay. Are you going to support pack rates? We don't need to raise that, the COVID money can pay that far.
Any other conversation from Mr. Roper, or any questions from Mr. Roper? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, I wonder, I should reply on tonight's agenda, committee report. Log number one seventy-seven was American Rescue Act funding, no action was taken by the committee. Log number one sixty-seven was the twenty-twenty-one foundation tax fund. Councilman Wilson made a motion to allocate three thousand dollars toward Pickens County Foreign Arts Center project with the South Connor and Hall of Fame. He contended that the Foreign Arts Center Foundation Board matches the funding. The motion was seconded by Councilman Waters, carried five one. Councilman said out of voting, there's no need for a second. This is a recommendation from the committee, is there any discussion? Clearing nine eleven, please, if I raise your hand. Close. Mr. Sanders, thank you. Log number one seventy-six, the ordinance five thirty-three, first reading inside the only, so again, control orders. Councilman Waters made a motion to amend the ordinance, make the discuss for votes changes, and send out a committee for the next reading. The motion was seconded by Councilman Alexeda and carried unanimously six others. You all have a copy of that amended ordinance in the packet, should be exhibit five B with the proposed changes. There is no second required, this comes from the recommendation of the committee. Is there any discussion?
Just have one question about this ordinance, it's actually very complete, it is very good job. Question I have is, when I was looking at the barking dogs, they're barking dogs, twenty-four years, says it requires two complaints. Now, let's say you're surrounded by people that all have dogs, and they have a complaint. So why, why, why is it actually required two complaints? I guess you don't want to see if that's better if one day against the other, or? I mean, you can understand that can be a glitch, that you're surrounded by relatives, or you're surrounded by people with dogs.
Yeah.
And you have evidence, you have evidence of dogs barking, twenty-four steps, but since there's not two complaints, it's something animal control to do.
That's right, that's exactly right. I did not add that, that's.
Now, that's been.
That's, that's been in the ordinance for some time, so I just made the changes that council wanted to make change, but I, I think you're exactly right, and as you're saying, is that if you have a, a dog barking once, that does not, that's not an issue, but if it does it twice, then they can come out and do it, but.
No, but it says it's a little different than that. It says, it says.
Where are you at, Mr. Sanders?
I'm looking at section four four, title number four, the last sentence. It says, the purpose of this subsection, an unoriginal disturbance of dog barking, is a disturbance that results in at least two independent reports of citizens. So if I have my neighbor's dog barking, and he's doing it all the time, but I'm the only one that complains, the animal control also can't do anything about. And that's, we, because I'm thinking that, because I've got a complaint right now with somebody in my district under that situation. And I understand why they have that in there, they don't want, you know, neighbor A to use the laws of his day or weaponize it against A and D. But there might be some instances where you're surrounded by owners of dogs, nobody else is complaining, you've got this one bike, who thinks it's a complaint of disturbance and decided to investigate it, it doesn't reach that criteria.
You know, council, when I read that a little different, I'll read it as, there's two reports. I'm not sure that it's two separate citizens. But you make a very good point, because I think it's unclear.
Two independent reports, yeah, that's right.
Two independent reports, so it could be the same person reporting twice. So it's two incidences of the dog barking, uh, but I, but what we can do is, uh, uh, make that, uh, clear.
Yeah.
Uh, or third reading.
If you want, just, just can just investigate it, just make it a little bit clearer, because I think animal control is interpreting that as two individual citizens.
I can rewrite it.
Any other discussion? Uh, all of the paper, please, if you can cover your hand. That's you, thank you, gentlemen. Log number, uh, one thirty-nine, discussion of county revenue, see, there was no action taken by the committee. For instance, to item six on tonight's agenda, council correspondence. Committee, the whole meeting will be next Monday, September twentieth, at six o'clock in the main conference room, the administration vote. The next council meeting will be held on Monday, October fourth, at six thirty P M, the council chambers, they have been voted through, we're about here now. Boards and commissions, there is an inter information page that says that the law gives you more information about current major season upcoming openings on Kansas County Board of Commissions. If you are interested in serving on the board, please stop by the table, or please see the local council, visit nations for more information. Is there any other course comments that need to be added? All right, item seven on tonight's agenda, motion period due business. Does any member have any motions to be made at this time? There you go. Item eight, tonight's agenda, consideration of extension of emergency mode at time off leave. Mr. Roper?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, this proposal comes from our H R department, and it's basically to clear up a time, a time expiration. Uh, in March of twenty twenty, under the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, F S C R A. Uh, folks, employees were eligible for two weeks of COVID pay, and they contracted COVID. So if they got COVID, or they were suspected of COVID, and they had to be out of work and couldn't work. Then, uh, they were eligible for up to two weeks of paid leave for that. The idea, they encouraged them not to try to force themselves to work if they were in trouble of not having enough leave time. Uh, that ended on twelve thirty-one twenty. Uh, council approved the extension of this, what we call COVID pay, terminally through May thirty-first of this year, and we continued with it. Uh, most of the instances is, it does not have a huge budget impact, because we have the vacancies that it, it covers it. But it's not requiring someone to burn vacation, particularly during the tendency of the pandemic. We let it expire on May thirty-first, because the numbers were so low, we weren't having anyone asking for it. But now, with this newest resurgence, we've had some instances where it's become an issue, where people would need to take leave without pay and wanted to stay out. So we don't think it'll have a huge budget impact, staff's recommending that we reinstitute it for, for the next six months, basically, they get retro. And allow us to, to do that, to encourage people to stay home in these circumstances if at all is possible.
Question about.
Mr. Roper, did not this also fall under market funding, where that could pay those?
You know, looking forward, this point forward, I think it's right, and it's, it's right on range. I agree.
So it wouldn't have any.
Right.
Other than opportunity.
What do you need from us, Mr. Roper?
Uh, just if you would approve us extending, I'm sorry, I turned this off. If you approve us extending that existing program from May thirty-first through the end of the year, that would be wonderful.
Motion to approve, continuation, consider.
Have a motion, I have a second, thank you. Second motion, any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to, to pay the funding board, on the other part of the council?
I think that would be fine, if that's, will the council, if you want to wait, make that decision, wait until night.
Put some pedicure, period. And it'll extend, et cetera, et cetera, and to deferred costs in excess of current budget, which are a lot of things for us.
Okay, my second.
Wow, so any other discussion on the motion? There you go, all of the paper, please, if you can cover your hand. Action hours, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item nine, on tonight's agenda, is first reading in town only, ordinance pick. To the county, it picks a certified portion of the Allison manufacturing company, Ariel building property, as a textile mill site. Under the South Carolina Textile Community Revitalization Act, I ask for a motion, and a second, to constitute first reading in town only of this ordinance. Motion. Motion out, and the paper, second.
Second.
Second, council, most discussion? No question.
Mr. Wilson? So the, the sites have become quite distressed in the last few years. I think they were operating under, the reason is intended as to give them the position of, for, and, and considering to do with the model.
I can address that, Mr. Mr. Trump.
Yeah, we both fit at the same time.
Uh, Councilman Wilson, I, I have looked at this, there are two separate sites, uh, that they are asking to be classified as a textile site. Uh, the benefit that they get is, if the council certifies it as a, as a textile site, when they do construction, they get a tax credit from the state for renovating textile construction sites. Then having to do property taxes has to do with the tax credit, uh, which is, I think, twenty-five percent of the construction bill, uh, the construction cost. Uh, and they're two separate, um, sites, uh, both of the sites are, have already been approved by the planning commission. Uh, one of them is, uh, and I believe a twenty, um, townhouse, uh, project. Twenty-two block, single-family residence is one of them, uh, that's on Church Street, Ariel Street. And the other one is a twenty-unit, single-family attached townhouse development, and that's the one, uh, on, uh, Ly Street and, and West Ariel Street.
For form of clarification, this ordinance is literally, uh, saying it needs the definition under the state law of what a textile mill site is. And just means, you know, we're the body that has to verify or endorse it, that's literally what this ordinance predicted, am I correct in that?
That's, that's absolutely correct, and, and I'll point out that some counties, uh, do this by resolution, uh, and when I looked at it, uh, to do it by resolution, you can do it in, after one city, obviously. Uh, with ordinance, you have to have three readings, um, and, uh, since we go to a planning commission, uh, situation, which may or may not come before this, uh, um, uh, before they ask for the certification, uh, we thought that we would go the route happening in ordinance rather than a resolution. That's just an aside, but yes, that's exactly, you're exactly correct.
Space yellow.
Mr. Roper? Yes, that is, the, the yellow, uh, outline and the, uh, just like some aqua outline, those are two specific parts of the old Alice mill site.
So those are undeveloped, or here's an overall site, or they only believe that they're on all of the building?
That's right, but they will be developed as part of this.
What is, what is the tax?
Excuse me?
What is the tax, that's twenty-five percent of what?
I believe it's twenty-five percent of the construction cost.
Okay, so it's a credit that they get against the county property tax?
No, no, it has nothing to do with county property taxes.
It'll have, it'll be a grant or a.
It's a credit that the developer gets on their taxes, for, for their own taxes, not, nothing to do, nothing to do with county.
It's a credit they get, it's a state income tax credit, it's a state.
Correct, and they, and those are, those are actually end up being, uh, uh, commodities that they can trade. Well, that was one question I had, is that, I know they swap this, they swap. The question is, they, we have a real builder here now, and we have a, a broker. Now, we have two, uh, two real builders, uh, uh, and in this instance, they, they've actually already been approved by the planning commission. So you said that, there, we mentioned, this is a happy project, and it, it appears, they said.
Vice President.
Mr. Roper, I'm curious, have we not talked about this before?
It was a separate conversation.
So, we, we went through this whole process with another company on the same piece of property, and did we, I don't know if we went through this?
Not, not, it was not on this, it's prior, that one was, uh, it's closer to Central.
There was one piece of, uh, which. We did have this over on Fifth.
Right, and, and the question is, that project.
And that project has people living in it.
Okay, they do. That's all I noticed, it's a real project, not, uh, what like.
And just keep seeing, look at the first Allison manufacturing, and keep thinking, I thought we were done, security.
Remember Allison manufacturing, on the block.
I, yes, they do, okay, my, my, my.
The other, the other thing I want to make, when, if you're a spirit of this law, it's actually to take a textile mill, rehab it. It's a spirit, because you get this high store, and rehab it, it's just basic, it's, they're just handing this guy a task credit, which is not a task credit, which makes it open to a power. We're just developing a piece of land like any other person that's ever been, it really doesn't apply with this spirit of the law, but it actually applies to weather. I think that's, they have land that's maybe a thousand feet of, of physical plant, is that it?
Yeah, I've, I've looked at the specific regulations about how far the, the, uh, property can, can go.
It's about.
It was a continued, it was a continuous piece of property, one point two mil, but it is outside of the actual building of the millions, correct?
Yes, it's a real. I'm getting this guy, it's within the letter of the state law, it's not just that problems asking, I guess I'm.
What, 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 what happened there?
Yeah, I understand, I, I guess that was, I'm just pointing it out. They really, it's a collision of law and the state, because they're not gonna have any cost of rehabilitating textile plant, because there's no textile plants in the earth of properties, that's right.
That's exactly right, I have the, uh, uh, the person who's petitioning, the council, the second reading.
That's what I was gonna say, is this, this first reading is an ordinance, not a resolution?
That's correct.
It's denied in one, two, one, three.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to. This is a change, I think, the observation is, that that particular mill could use, um, you know, approximately, to that particular mill. I mean, nothing would benefit us more than, um, hospital improvements in that particular area, too. I think that that would be the better of all, trying to convince the citizens to be done with this rest facility here. Always want to make some things, start to sit around, writing to the public.
Normally, I would agree with you, I just, my general philosophy is different than everybody else's, I really think that, I just don't want to really spend any more government money to bring people to this cat, and we can't manage, and that's what people are here for. That's the problem, I mean, um, when you go to the recycle center, we're not at the recycle, we're tired, we just can't do it, we're overwhelmed with it, can't do it. We talked about EMS, some of the response times, look for, I live, very high, I've been lost in the planes. We're gonna, we're gonna give tax credits to the developers, bringing more people here. I mean, just, I can see if we want to top all our responsibilities, we want to form, we want to, so many of them, maybe roads, we're around seventy-five year road cycle, we're actually, it's a road. So I just, the idea of more development, I mean, encouraging it, tax cuts, like I said, if this was a property tax cut, I would encourage, no, one hundred percent. Because we can't imagine people that can't do that, encouraging more development, it's just gonna make it a problem, of course.
I understand that, but again, that's not a progressive theory, that's not what this is, this is purely a, if it's the, the definition of first state law, and we're the body that's supposed to sign off on it, and it's a, it's giving them tax credit.
The main thing this was supposed to do, help flagging areas, and, uh, the lotless areas, I don't, uh, know exactly where this is, the lotless areas. And it was a problem, and it helps the, uh, to have new, uh, buildings there.
There's a good one, but there's another one, it's too good.
Any other discussion? There you go, all of the paper, please, if you can cover your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, item number seven on the agenda tonight, is public hearing to establish the annual bill break to meet the budgetary requirements of the county for this two year, beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And now, I'll call the public hearing, and if anyone would, anyone like to comment? Here you go, comment? We'll close with the public hearing session for that. Item number eleven, on tonight's agenda, this public hearing, is third reading of an ordinance, number six oh two, repealing ordinances, two ninety-five, three thirty-two, three sixty-five, and three seventy-three, the road use or fee ordinances. And amending ordinance number five ninety-nine, the fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget ordinance, so as to provide for limited taxes to offset the loss of revenue from the repeal of said road use or fee ordinance, and matters related there to. One question, Mr. Chairman, this is probably going to be, and let you discuss, and the third chance for you to go a five minute. Anyone have an issue with a short recess? I will take a short five-minute recess, and we'll return. Let it be asked, I'll, I'll.